All right, good morning, everyone. Why don't we begin by standing and having a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for another day. We thank you that you are here with us and that we can rely on you to give us direction and guidance to make decisions on behalf of this county. In fact, we turn this entire agenda over to you at this time. We pray for our military, our servicemen and servicewomen as they serve us across the globe. Please protect them regardless of the circumstances that they are in and ultimately bring them safely home. We pray for our local first responders. We pray, Lord, for daily protection and safety for them as they take care of the dangerous jobs on our behalf. Lord, we just thank you for those that live in this county, in this city. We thank you for the taxpayers that support the operations of this county. We thank you for the employees that serve as well. Continue to bless our community and the days ahead in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does he want to come in? I think he's got the wrong court. Are you supposed to get a court appearance today?
Yes, sir.
Do you know what court it's in? Because this is not going to be the court you're looking for. This is Commissioner's Court. It might be across the street in the annex.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll get started today. And for the record, today is our second and final meeting, normal standard meeting of the month. This is the 28th day of October 2019. Just after nine o'clock, we'll begin with opportunity for public comments in keeping with our Open Meetings Act. If there's anybody that has anything to address the court on at this time that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. All right, we'll move to consideration of our minutes from our last meeting on October the 11th. Was that Commissioner Applewhite that made the motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of approving the minutes October 11th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Item number three, we have Sheriff Ingram with us today to talk to us about his need for additional jailers in light of the opportunity that he's had to house Grayson County prisoners. I think you kind of set us up for this a few weeks ago that this might happen. And of course, if it makes financial sense, we'll certainly listen. Okay.
Sheriff? Yeah, we were gonna try our best to hold these inmates for Grayson County without hiring more jailers, but you know, the jail population fluctuates. And right now, like this morning, we're up to 132. So, and with the jailers that we have, we can only hold, we can only put 145 in jail. We're gonna have to have more people. So, they were wanting to bring 15, but right now, what we can handle is seven. So, with Grayson County, it disappears like this. Might end up turning out to be a pretty long-term relationship hopefully because they're not planning on building a jail anytime soon. And they're wanting to use us. So, we'll find out if they're supposed to call us today, let us know if they're bringing some. So, we're gonna need, we're gonna need two more jailers and because we told them we could hold a total of 16 with two more jailers at one time. Now, here's the deal. If for some reason they don't keep 16 in, then we certainly, even though you approve me to, and we can do without them if, because our DA's real good about getting police done, getting people out. So, if that happens and the jail population goes down, well, then by all means, if when we have a jailer that leaves, then we won't hire back in that position and we'll keep that open just in case we need it, in case Grayson County wants to give us even more. So, we'll definitely be, be real, you know, watchful on that. But yeah, if we're gonna hold them, we do need two more approved so that we can hold at least. We're gonna, we're gonna try to hold 16 for them. We're gonna try to fill up a whole pot for them if they need it and so.
Those two will, even with their split schedules, will give you the additional manpower you need. Is that one extra per shift? How does that work out?
Yeah, well, it depends because, you know, we've got more to do than just sit in there and watch inmates. We have a lot going on. We have to go to do hospital runs, you know. There's just a lot that goes on in the jail. So, that would actually allow us if we were full. If one was off on comp or vacation time, it would, it would leave us someone in there to, to keep it covered. So.
I just want to be sure we're making it clear that you're hiring a total of two people, not two per shift or anything like that.
No, it's a total of two. Yeah, that's, yeah, because on nights, we've got six on nights, so we can, we can handle one on nights. The day shift is where we're, we're what have a problem. And that's where most of my guys have to leave too, you know, so we go out and pick up roads.
These are day shift positions, and it's possible these two new positions would be working together at the same time to hit your mandated numbers.
Well, no, there should be one per shift.
One per shift.
Yeah, just one per shift's all I need. And like I say, if something happens and the jail population starts going down, by all means, we'll keep the, the jailer count down too. We won't rehire when someone leaves if, if that happens. So, but yeah, but, but I think we need to be ready because it seems like they're not planning on building a jail and they're wanting to use us. They're, they're gonna call us today, let us know how many they're bringing or how many we can hold. So, and as of today, we can't hope at seven. So, as soon as we get something worked out, we can, we can probably hope, you know, what we can, we can hold more.
And you literally can't, if they showed up tomorrow with 15, by law, you can't do it?
Can't do it. We can't do it right now. We just got too many people in jail.
What can you handle right now?
We can handle seven. That would put us up at 145.
What is their expectation as far as their, the day that they're supposed to deliver to you?
You know, we'll find out today. They're, they're, they're gonna call us. I talked to Mike this morning, my jail captain, Garcia. They're supposed to call us today by lunch and let us know what, if, when they're gonna bring them. They're supposed to bring us some. So, yeah, and if for some reason they didn't and they keep putting us off, well, I'd still like to have the positions we need them, but we just won't hire if they don't, if they don't bring them. So.
Compensation package for these positions is what?
$50 a head for, for each prisoner they bring us, $50 a day.
Now, for the, for the cost of these two employees?
Oh, now, to hit the exact cost, you, you have to add in.
Well, roughly, what's your starting pay on these?
I think it's what, around 13 an hour, $13 an hour. But now, if you count in their retirement and stuff, and I don't know, would have to get to the auditor's office to find out the exact amount, but if you look, if you look at the whole package overall, so, yeah, it would, you know, if they, if they bring us 15, it's gonna weigh more than it's gonna pay for, you know, two additional.
Yeah.
And then a lot more. So, oh yeah, we'll be, we'll be doing good on it.
How quickly can you get these hired? Do you have resumes sitting there with people?
We've got a couple, yes, sir. Now, it may take us a couple of weeks to get them in, but, but we can, we can start to work on it. But first, I want to make sure Grayson County's gonna keep their word and bring us the inmates. They say they are. So, I just think we need to be prepared because this could be, actually be, you know, a good deal for us, for the taxpayers to come out.
Okay, questions for Sheriff?
Can I have a question on this?
I'll allow it, yes.
Thank you. On this 132 people you got over there, I mean, this may seem off the wall to some humor in the way you're saying, where are those 132 coming from? Strictly, does that count? Are we bringing them through the border or where?
No, well, no, we, we do hold, we do hold some. But now, the ones, the ones that, like the illegals that come in, now, they're usually going pretty quick because they'll just bring them in and get them out. We haven't been holding a lot of them.
You hold some from?
No, we house federal inmates. We do house, we do house federal inmates. No. Well, no, we've housed federal inmates is what we house for the long term.
But you don't have any border, as you call it?
I don't believe so, not right now.
Not from the border patrol here? Okay.
But don't, now, now, when they, when we do have those, they, they usually get those out within three days. They don't stay long and they're gone.
That's not easy to say because it's not really a money-making situation there, is it?
Uh, well, it can be over, like over a year's period. Depends on how many they bring in. It can be pretty good.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, but, and the good thing about those is they're not here long when they bring them in. But if they bring them in and leave them an hour, we charge them for 24 hours.
Okay, so just the border patrol personnel, they bring one in, you usually get it out within three days or something, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was my question on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner, any questions?
No.
All right. Need a motion if you all care to support or not support this request.
Make a motion when we hire two jailers.
Second. You want to enlarge that to say as needed based on?
Yes, as needed.
Based on the?
Tim's discretion.
Based on what actually ends up happening with Grayson County?
Mm-hmm.
Up to two jailers?
Up to two jailers under Tim's discretion, but watch what happens with our population.
And Barbara, we can pull this from contingency, I assume, would be where we would get this?
Yes, sir.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Fitch and Commissioner Parker seconded that. All in favor of this request by Sheriff Ingram, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Sheriff. Item number four, report on our roadwork status. I'll start with Commissioner Parker, Precinct Four, please.
Well, we, we've got everything cleaned up and straightened up from the, from the chip sealing and all. We've got the, the machine and the distributor truck out at our place. Well, the distributor trucks in town are getting some warranty work done right now. We took it Friday. And just to get some warranty work, some stuff done.
The, the truck itself?
Yes.
The distributor truck?
Yes. And my guys are actually trying to get through with their, our second round of mowing. We'd probably like about three, four more days being through with our mowing. And then we're gonna try to get to work on some culverts that we've got to, got to replace and, and all of that. But it's, that's kind of where we're standing right now.
Your chip sealing done for the year at this point?
Yes, sir.
You feel like if you, if you get done what you hoped to get done?
I, I wanted about four or five more miles, but after it turned cold that morning, we had so much trouble getting the truck started, I just, I pulled off of it, so.
Commissioner Applewhite?
Well, we've, like I said, cleaned up trees and stuff last weekend. We were patching and replacing and we're, well, getting a tractor fixed. We're gonna finish some mowing. We got sugar hill on top of the mowing and we're gonna get that sort of end of season, finish on the mowing and start digging out soft spots to be ready for next year's. And put in a few, put in a few culverts since last week.
How did that stuff you went to Waco to get?
I mean, Jimmy.
I used the stabilizer, but they, I talked to them one day last week, I guess it was, and they're fixing to start making the ROC. And I'm gonna seal, I've got several roads I'm gonna try to seal. Well, some of the ones that I was gonna seal code, I'm gonna put that on there and try to stretch them out another couple of years.
Have we used any of it yet?
No, sir. No, sir.
The tire or the track chips that have done, we'll just get into that.
And they don't start making this stuff till, till, usually somewhere around the first of November before they start even producing.
It's an off-season product.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Commissioner Fitch?
Uh, we went out on County Road 2910 and pulled the sides up on it, up against, fixed the shoulders on the road. And we patched and did some ditch work on 2630, 2600, 2650, 2640, 2670, and 2675. And we, we cut down some trees after the storm, during the storm, and then we cut a couple of trees that were leaning, maybe because of the storm, they were broken and trying to get them before they fall. And we started on 1150, 1155, and 1153 patching. And we're gonna dig some soft spots out and get those roads ready to chip seal. And we fixed the intersection at 2675 and 2630. It had some washouts and some drop-offs in the corners of that, so we got that going. And we're out getting ready for next year, doing some, we got to cover up a few soft spots and get the roads in good shape for winter and planning our chip sealing for next year already. So, things are moving on.
Very good. Commissioner Riddle?
Been patching potholes, doing ditching, cleaning out ditches. Trees, we finished a little bit of mowing and just staying busy trying to, trying to keep the potholes filled up mainly.
All right, thank you. Item number five, consider and possibly approve the purchase of a truck for Precinct One. Commissioner Riddle, tell us about this.
We, we had a truck that we pull our backhoe around with all the time. We use it every day. When we went to the unit system, they parked that truck because it's so much trouble and it's set for a year and a half. And we've started using it and working it, but it's, it's just been a very undependable truck since I've been there, seven years. And I'd like to get a new one and, and it's only options that I think we have. Jimmy just bought one. He took bids on, bids on them. I have a copy of the bids. Elliot Ford was still the low bidder and they were, it was almost $1,500 more than what Jimmy paid because of 2020 model compared to the 2019 model. And it's, it's got the necessary equipment that we need. And Jimmy says his is working good and I think it would work. We could use the truck. We need something dependable.
Okay, is this budgeted?
No, I'd like to put it on the payout deal that we put the other equipment, like we've done a lot of it. That's my first choice. Second choice, I'd, I have to use the carryover, but I didn't put it in the budget. And we still don't know what the carryover's gonna be from last year, I don't suppose. Didn't have it the last time, one day last week, I asked. I don't know how much it's gonna be.
What's, what's the approximate cost on this? And what kind of truck is it?
It's a Ford 550, the model number.
Okay. And Jimmy, how did you finance that? What kind of terms?
Uh, just borrowed from general, general account.
But how many years and what's your monthly amount?
Uh, four and?
Four years?
Off the top of my head, I can't.
About a thousand a month, a little less?
Yeah, something over like that, I think.
Okay.
I'd have to look back, but I, I think it's something, something about that.
Barbara, if we did this, how does that show up in our, in our budget? Do you, if you use the general fund to make that loan, do we still need, what kind of a budget adjustment are we going to need to have? How will this look? Are we just gonna need to budget the 12 annual, uh, 12 monthly payments as being the expense part that'll require new money in the budget?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll amend the budget, and I'll bring that to you next, next meeting. We'll amend the budget for the monthly amount. An annual amount will be what we amend it for, but then we'll also have to book a payable for the rest of the, whatever it is. And then that offsets the fund balance that, that he may have in his account at the end of the year. Now, there is something that Carl put together when he did budget. His estimated amount was $59,000. That's what he thought that you would have in carryover.
As all?
That's all. Now, that's his estimate. Now, the reason why we've not gotten that information out yet is because we continue to get bills that are late. They've been, they're not necessarily yaws. They're just things that, that maybe you did, you know, right at the end of September and those things are still coming in. So, I don't want to give you an estimate and it, and the actual is lower. I prefer to give you a more conservative estimate. And because I'm new, I don't know what's out there. So, that's the reason why I don't have an official answer for you. But $59,000 is what Carl had estimated for Precinct One. And then at the end of this year, if you stay within budget at 2020, 85.5. But now, if we do this truck and it's $1,000 a month, you'd take 12 off of, 12,000 off of that or 11 if it's only 11 months.
Well, I'm not sure. I had about 90,000, but you say 88. I, I don't know how, how'd you get that?
$59,000 is the number that Carl had that he thought you, you would have at September 30th.
Right, okay.
And then the revenue for your, all the precincts, 726,000, 500, $700,000 in expenditures. So, he didn't budget for you to spend all the money that you were taking in, so it would increase. So, you'd have about 85.5 was his estimate at September of 2020.
But that's, that's next year's. That's September of 2020.
Right. As it stands right now, 59,000 is the number that Carl had.
That, those fund, when you give us a little fund balances, it shows about 90,000 in Precinct One.
Well, your cash may be 90,000, but if there's any payable, that's what I was talking about. We have to book that payable, the rest of whatever else it is that you owe to the county.
Got you.
That your precinct owes.
Yeah.
Okay, so if he makes the, if he makes this purchase first of December, I mean, excuse me, first of November, that really gives us 11 months at roughly $1,000, call it. So, we'll see an $11,000 adjustment to the budget as far as what I'll call new money.
That's correct.
Okay.
I do have one question, though. Um, the bids, since, since the officer's office is overseeing some of the purchasing now, do you have new bids?
No, I used the one that Jimmy had. I called him and I got a new one from, from the Ford dealer. I didn't get a new one from the Chevrolet dealer or the other Ford dealer that Jimmy, Jimmy's got. I've got all three of Jimmy's bids and I didn't get one from them. They were in San Antonio or somewhere out of town.
Yeah, one was in San Antonio and the other one was in?
Gonzalez Ford.
Yeah, Gonzalez, I think.
I think, I think that if we make a purchase through the buy board or if we can beat the buy board price, we avoid the necessity of going out for bid. That's what, that's my understanding, but I would encourage you to agree with us on that.
I do agree with you on that. But my concern is that if we don't have new bids and we've not checked with buy board to see if they have a new bid, then these bids may not still be in effect.
Got you.
And I'm, I'm not saying they're not. I'm saying I don't know.
Is this, is this not a current buy board price here?
It, yeah, yeah. It's just, I mean, like Al said there a while ago, his, uh, it's 50, didn't you say 1,500 higher than what mine was? He has talked to the, them up at Elliot's about it. And, but now, the others that he's got, I'm sure they're gonna be higher too, but?
Right.
But I, you know, I don't know that.
But the buy board bid that you had was for a 19 model.
Yes, yes.
So, I'm assuming that buy board now has something out there for a 20 model and that's what we need to get to compare to make sure that we are indeed getting a better price from Elliot.
Yeah. Let's find, yeah, you're exactly right. We need a current buy board price. If there's an available 2019 out there, fine. If not, what is the 2020 buy board price? And then you can use that as your gauge on whether or not you're gonna buy it locally or through the buy board. And so, are we understanding that correctly? We really don't know what today's buy board price is?
Other than that one bid he's got.
I can, I can get new ones from them if I, get them to send me new ones. Yeah, I've talked to them.
All they have to do is call them and they'll send them the new, the new bid.
Who is the authorized buy board dealer?
Gonzalez Ford.
Gonzalez, where are they?
San Antonio, pass, San Antonio.
San Antonio, yeah.
Now, the other thing we need to keep in mind is even if the buy board bid is less expensive, we have to consider the cost to go and get that vehicle and bring it back. So, it may also, Elliot may still be less expensive overall.
Everyone that, that I have, have, they've got that, the FOB there, you know, here is the price that they give me. And that's a lot of time the reason that, that our local folks on different things can, can, can beat them is because of that.
Right.
So.
So, you're saying the buy board price is delivered?
Yes.
Oh.
It's, it's, the, the price that they give us has got that added into it.
Okay, that's the price.
The delivery price is added into it. I mean, I could've, I could've went down there and got it probably cheaper than what, what, you know, it would've cost to, for them to have shipped it here, but the, it wasn't feasible for me to take my hand and drive to San Antonio and pick up the vehicle. I didn't think.
Right.
And I mean, it was, the bid was still higher than what our local bid was.
All right. All right, questions, comments, motions?
Al, do you want to put that in form of motion?
Yes, I'd like to. I'll put it in the form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Can we make part of that motion that whatever we do purchase will, it will meet or exceed the buy board current price?
Well, we, in the past, if it's like 2% or 3% or 4%, we give it to the local guy.
You put, you can make your motion however you want.
Well, if it's that close, I'd like to make my motion that we buy it from Elliot Ford, a local dealer.
Within how much? Once you put a dollar amount on it?
1,500, 2,000.
You've actually been able to beat the price.
Yeah. The only thing, this, this, this one that I bought back in, whenever it was, I guess I got it, I guess it come in in May. I actually purchased it last December, I think it was, right around 1st December. But I had a bid on a Chevrolet also. It was coming out of a dealer down south, down here somewhere around College Station, somewhere or other. And they, it, they were gonna ship it to Sandlin's, this where it would, but they were the buy board. Sandlin wasn't actually on the buy board and they don't deal in commercial vehicles. So, I got with them and they got with this dealer in, down, down south, down here. And it was within $84, I think it was, of what it was. But the truck that, that, their truck was as good a truck seemed like, but it just, this other one, we had one, Dana's got one like the one I've got, you know, that was purchased a couple of years ago or something. And it, the guy said it was a real good truck. It pulled their equipment real good and done a good job. So, that was one of the reasons that I decided to go ahead and go with it. But, but that bid was within, I think it was $84 of.
I can tell you the numbers if you want them. It was 40, the other one was 41,445. Elliot was 41,350.
Yeah, yeah.
That's about $350. And so was the, the bid from the San Antonio Ford dealer was the same. It was a little bit more than this one, but close. They were all real close. So, I'll get another one from the San Antonio dealer, I guess Chevrolet if you want me to, but I.
But you want the Ford, right?
Yeah, I want Ford, with the one that.
All right, got a motion. And the motion is for approval to purchase a F-550 Ford at the buy board or better price to be financed over 48 months by Precinct One. I got a second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, while we're talking about mechanical things, item number six, discuss the current interdepartment charges for maintenance shop services with possible action to follow. Commissioner Applewhite, I have you on here to get us started in this conversation and help us to understand what it is we're voting on.
Well, we're trying to, to get away from a lot of paperwork that's unnecessary and stuff like that. The auditor's office, they get, they get bid for a ticket for the part and they get a separate one for the, for the ironing rack. And it's just, you know, a lot of paperwork for them. And it's just, you know, we've got two different things. You gotta mash them up and, you know, we get a lot of paperwork. But I didn't know if we could, how we could do this and we just charge the one time $35 But I didn't know if we could, how we could do this and we just charge the one time thirty-five dollar fee every time or not do, whatever we had to do to make it a lot easier.
Tell us what we're doing, cause I'm still, I don't, I don't even.
We're charged thirty-five dollars an hour for him to work on a piece of machine. And it was when I first came here, it was like thirty-five dollars per unit, but now it's per hour.
When did, when did that change? I don't recall that changing.
It was done in the unit system.
Roger warned it for some reason or the.
Keep up with the amount of maintenance and stuff on the old machine if you get rid of it. But, you know, they still keep up with the hours of work on the machine. You can always, excuse me, go in there, file what you have, pull that piece of machine up because it's all in their computer, computer or in their file cabinet to show how many hours they work on that piece of machine. And you just have to, you know, you can go by, thirty-five, you can go by, like one of the hair conduits, like a hundred and twenty-five dollars. You can see how much you're working on that piece of machine. But as far as just keeping up like that, I just, you know, there's a lot of paperwork involved.
What was Roger's objective for creating that thirty-five dollars an hour?
Keep up with how much it was going to cost to work on that piece of machine.
And you're saying with our current software, we, we can keep up, Jeff?
Yes.
Can keep up with how much time he's spending on a particular, we don't need to have this interdepartmental charge where we're charging each precinct or say the sheriff's department to work on a vehicle at thirty-five dollars an hour.
And like I said, I was just trying to, you know, see what was the objective and see if we could, uh, uh, just kind of do away with a lot of the excess paperwork.
Okay. How do we deal with the budget imbalances that'll be created if you eliminate that charge to these departments, which was a revenue source for the shop?
I'm saying, we had to pay more, I guess we had to, how much would we have to take out of that?
Sixty-five hundred dollars per precinct and then for sheriff's departments, eighteen thousand.
Yes, and there's an additional sixty-five hundred dollars for other, for constables and any other cars like that. Those are all just lumped together.
Say that again, there's additional, what?
Sixty-five hundred, the total, the total that it comes to is fifty thousand five hundred dollars with twenty-six, five of that coming from.
Sixty-five per precinct, eighteen to the sheriff and who were the other?
And sixty-five constables, the car that James uses, any other vehicle within the county is just lumped into one line item.
Okay, not, there's not sixty-five hundred for each precinct constable?
There's sixty-five hundred for each precinct, then there's eighteen for the sheriff and then sixty-five hundred.
Another sixty-five that handles all other miscellaneous department vehicles.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So I'm sure that not each precinct uses the same amount of, of money. At least that's what I heard from Commissioner Fitch. He didn't think he used a full sixty-five hundred. What would it be in an equitable way to make this, make this adjustment? Just take away that sixty-five now that we're kind of at the early part of our budget here.
And if we take that away, it goes, that fifty-five, it'll add up to fifty-five thousand, goes into the maintenance department budget and also eliminates all that paperwork he does to turn in.
I, I have a recommendation, Judge, and it's just a recommendation. There's a lot of paperwork that the current system takes. For example, Mr. Cates goes out and buys, we'll say, oil filters or wiper blades and he puts them on the shelf. And then when he works on a piece of, of equipment, he bills that back to, to the whatever department, wherever it goes and then he adds thirty-five dollars to it. So he's, he's getting invoice, we're paying that invoice. Then when it's time for the commissioners to pay that back because he's worked on their vehicle, then there's another invoice that's created for, and then a check is cut from, from general county into the maintenance department, but the maintenance department is part of general county. So there's a lot of, of, in my opinion, unnecessary paperwork. My suggestion is instead, I know that y'all would like to do away with that, but if you do away with it totally, then it's gonna have to come out of your budget all at one time in order to make it work. One other option that we could do, and this is what I suggest we do before we just do away with it, is we just have Mr. Cates keep up with that thirty-five dollars and the other things that he's doing for you to charge those back to your department and to do that quarterly. And then we'll see where we're at. Do that quarterly for the first three quarters of this year. And then my recommendation is when it gets to be the last three months, we get that monthly from him so that we know when it's about to close, you'll know that's when you have more costs anyway during the cost of the summer months when it's, you can do more roadwork and things break down more. But my, my goal is to make sure that we're not doing unnecessarily, unnecessary clerical work. I think that he's doing, he's doing a lot of that the way that it's currently set up.
With your select, with your suggestion, does that do away with the additional paperwork immediately or is that postponing for nine months?
Well, it, it postpones it so that it's only done every quarter, but we would get one invoice for him, for, one for each commissioner instead of one for every time he works for them. Right now, we get, if, if a truck is brought in and it's worked on, we get an invoice. If another truck is brought in, another piece of equipment, it's constant invoices. What I'm suggesting is we get something quarterly that shows everything for that, uh, department. And then we can keep up with it.
Monthly would be an improvement.
Monthly, monthly would be fine.
But quarterly's.
I mean, it's just at the pleasure of the court, whatever, whatever y'all want to do, doesn't matter to me. But, but this, that amount of paperwork every time they do something, I can see that that takes a lot of Mr. Cates' time. That takes extra time in our office, that's an extra check for Ms. Pretty to cut. I just don't think that we need that because y'all know when they do anything for you because you ask for them to do it, you know?
So Barbara, you're saying, let me make sure I'm understanding this right. You're saying if I take in four pieces of equipment this month, the month of November, then he won't charge me for those four until the end of November?
That's right.
And do one, one ticket on those four pieces of equipment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And he could still have all the information that you wanted to be on.
Yeah, I'd still have all of the information I needed, but for myself, yeah.
And then so he would do one ticket instead of four. And really, there's five because if he has bought that somewhere else.
Yeah.
There's that ticket too that we're paying. And it still could be five if he had to buy an alternator or something that, you know, he doesn't keep in stock.
Yeah.
And this is just a suggestion. I, I just, because it's fifty thousand five hundred dollars, I hate for us to do away with that revenue source for the maintenance barn because we have to pay for, we've got to pay for what they're doing out there somehow. And the general fund is already paying a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars towards it.
I don't think anybody's suggesting taking away that revenue source. I think they're talking about, and I'm not trying to guide us in any particular direction. I'm, I'm, I'm listening to what everybody says. What I'm hearing is they're saying they give up the sixty-five hundred in their budget and they give that to Jeff. So Jeff's budget goes up, their budget goes down, same with sheriff, and it all equals out, there's no new money.
We can do that, we can do that as well, but then it comes back to what you mentioned about who uses how much of it. You're not gonna have any records to know if one precinct uses more, those kinds of things. I do have the information from last year. Last year, now this is as of August the twenty-eighth, so there's some more things that have come in. Precinct one, forty-four hundred dollars, precinct two, twenty-five hundred, precinct three, sixty-two hundred, precinct four, twenty-eight hundred. So those are last year's numbers. So, I mean, if y'all want to move the entire sixty-five hundred, that certainly at your discretion, but you may not want to do that because some of you didn't use sixty-five hundred dollars. Now, keep in mind that that's not just the thirty-five dollars, that's the thirty-five dollars plus the reimbursement for the oil filters or the tires or whatever it was that they did.
Those numbers included, all that?
Yes, sir.
Really?
Yes, sir.
That, that is, that is so absurd, those numbers are, because we have created, what we're doing, and I'm, I'm telling these other three commissioners, and I hope the voters can listen, we're creating another entity and this, they all work for all four commissioners. Of course, I'm not allowed to say anything about if they're screwing off or not working, you know what I mean? The other three think they are, so they can put anything they want to down. They put anything now down in ours. I had a ticket for five hundred dollars, four hundred dollars on keys made for our new machine. I said, why are you charging that to precinct one? He said, well, I'll take it off some other time. I sold loosey-goosey record-keeping that I've ever seen. What you don't know is we paid eight thousand dollars and we pay four hundred a month for another outfit. So when they get through with the ticket that you're talking about, like it should be or used to be, put in a folder, they gotta go in and sit in the office and each one of them have to enter it in a computer. So it gets down to, down to, uh, this guy there in Gilmore, I think. And we paid them a thing and they say we're a three-year contract, we can't do anything about it. So we're gonna spend that time, put it in the computer till we do it. This, this is a terrible way to not have any accountability. Every commissioner is responsible for keeping up his equipment. We take it away where we're giving it all to the shop now. So we're creating another entity. Why should we do that? Every, I'm, I'm responsible for my equipment. If I don't maintain it, change oil, I should be, have to buy, pay for it or pay the breakdown. Why should we all pay for it? I don't want to pay for the other commissioner and it was been like that for years. And all of a sudden now, since we had the unit system and it went back, we've created this monster. It's a monster, it's going to eat, we paid a hundred thousand dollars more in the budget this year. And when you talk to the Jeffy, you ask him about it, you say, how many, oh, it's in the budget. Why are you working this part timer? He was out mowing the grass or something. He said, oh, it's in the budget. I'm telling you, you've created a monster. These three commissioners are, should look at it from a business point, standpoint. They shouldn't be looking at it from a good old boy. And, and Mr., the judge says, Jeff's a real nice person. He is, they're both nice people, but they're not working because they're not directed, no supervision, no accountability. They can put down anything they want to a number of hours, no accountability. It's, it's, it's the most ridiculous thing from a business standpoint I've ever seen. It's another reason why government is so wasteful and so spent, it's just a waste of time and money. We should have, we had a slip, we put it in there, each commissioner's worried about his equipment. The mechanic talked to the, us about it, decided which is the best way to fix it because we don't have, we'll be buying computers because you have to have computers work on anything now. You have to take it to the dealer. Back to the dealer, we'll, we'll, the, the way we're going and the way we're approaching this thing, we'll be buying computers because we need it for this particular type of equipment. And we have so many just singular pieces of equipment that's not alike. We don't have two hundred pieces of equipment or a hundred pieces of equipment that's alike. We have the sheriff's cars, but it gets more than changing oil. PMs or perfected maintenance, they have to take it to the dealer. They can't, they don't have a computer to put it on. Next thing you know, they'd be wanting to buy a computer. I'm telling you, we need to stop this, this system, it needs to be organized different than making this a completely different entity. And that's the way it's going. That's the way you're headed and they've sold it to these, through my fellow commissioners, that that's the way it should be because they're nice guys. And that, and that's it. But I'm telling you, it's a wrong way to do business. Somebody's got to be accountable. The commissioner is elected by the people, he's accountable and he should be responsible for his equipment. And his maintenance costs should go up if he don't maintain his equipment. But now, we're gonna spread all that around, we don't have nobody accountable.
What's your suggestion on this agenda item?
What's my suggestion? My suggestion is to get rid of that thirty-five, why take labor? Who knows if they spend two hours and put thirty-five hours, if they spend thirty minutes? Who knows? It's silly to have that, on this suggestion.
Okay, explain to me, I'm still not following what your suggestion is.
My suggestion is that thirty-five dollars an hour that they put on equipment for labor, if they change a filter in a, in a truck, they put thirty-five dollars an hour on labor. We don't know how much, but they put it in the, in the book to charge it out to that precinct, the thirty-five dollar labor. It's a big waste of time and money, as Barbara said. It's not, it's not, it's a waste of time, we should get rid of it.
You're still not explaining to me what you want to do. I'm hearing you supporting the thirty-five.
I'm saying, no, I'm saying get rid of the thirty-five.
Well, that's what they're wanting to do too.
That's what I'm saying, get rid of the thirty-five.
So what's the difference in what you're supporting and what they're supporting?
They're supporting the fact that we are letting the commissioners out of the responsibility of maintaining his equipment. We're turning it all over to them, giving them a big budget, spend another, add another hundred thousand dollars. I'm saying it's a mistake. The commissioners should be responsible for their equipment and, and they should be accountable, the mechanic should be accountable.
So just close the shop?
Do I?
Just close the shop and let everybody maintain their own equipment?
If they can't do the work, if they're gonna sit in the office all the time, just close the shop. I don't know what you're gonna do about this, if they have no management, no supervision, no accountability. They can just put anything they want to on a piece of paper, it's a very poor system. But I don't think, I think it's silly to put the thirty-five dollars under there. I think it's a waste of time and money.
All right, y'all like what Barbara is suggesting? Do you have another alternative? Let's try to get something done here.
So you're saying maybe we should, like I said, do away with the thirty-five dollars? Just take that sixty-five hundred that's in our budget for maintenance that we've been paying them and?
Yeah, we've already got two or three thousand in maintenance anyhow in my budget.
Yeah.
Have you looked at your budget? You've got a line item for, for maintenance. Why do you want to take it out of there and put it down there to the shop and let somebody else be responsible for your equipment? It's the easy way out, that's the way to do it. That way, you don't have to, well, they're not fixing it. I don't have a truck, because why? It's in the shop, because he don't work for you. But he's always worked for everybody, he works for all four commissioners and they should do what we ask them to do. And if they can't do it, they should tell us. And we use our professionalism, they're, they're experts. They need, we need to farm this out to Bain or we need to farm it out to Elliot.
We could try it that way, just quit paying them, keep our budgets like they are, you know? Because that's how we're gonna pay our bills. But that maintenance department as a whole may come up a little short at the end of the year.
If they're living under budget and they're trying to do it, I mean, Jeff has told me more than once.
What was the sheriff's department?
It's in my budget, so that's it. So we've created a budget that they can do anything they want to with, with no management, no supervision about what they do with it. I'm telling you, we're headed down the wrong road. And I, and I plead with the, the other three commissioners to consider what they're doing to that maintenance shop by creating this other department. It'd be just like the federal, we'll have homeland security in that. It's, it's the wrong way to do it. We've taken the commissioners out of the responsibility for maintenance and that is absolutely not correct.
All right, guys, what do y'all want to do?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, I don't, they don't take care of my maintenance. They do what I ask them to do. And I take man in there, if I've got something, just like I've got a back hole and I've got a dump truck sitting out there right now, they'll work on it when they get to it. And then that's, you know, what they're supposed to do. Uh, as far as, as the thirty-five, I, I meant, I can see where it was, what it was set up for. I don't, I didn't really like the way it was set up. And that was during the unit system when it was set up that way. And as far as the thirty-five dollars, I don't know that it's necessary because, uh, and just like Barbara was talking about there, the, what we, uh, need to do is, is what she suggested, I think. And, and try it for the rest of this year and see what happened and see where it goes and then, then worry about setting the budget then for next year.
There's so much little stuff that trying to put it on a, a monthly basis at the end of the month would be, uh, it'd be nice to do it, it would be, might create a little bookkeeping problem if they had to do it. I'd rather, uh, I'd rather the, I do it, be responsible to do it.
Mr. Cates, I, I met with him and he told me that he could keep up with that, but I explained to him that I would need your, y'all's signatures as well as the account code where you need that to come from before we would pay it. So he won't just turn it into me and it get paid. He'll turn it into my office and then you will have to approve it before it gets paid. I'm sure, though, that before he even puts it on his list, you're gonna have to bring your piece of equipment in there and then he'll keep up with it there. He told me he keeps that in the computer, he's got that, all that information ready.
How much did sheriff's department pay last year in maintenance fees?
Fifteen-five. The year before it was twenty-one.
All right. Anybody know what kind of motion this sounds like?
I'll make a motion to get rid of the thirty-five dollar an hour charge of labor that they're doing.
And then we'll just have our invoices on all our equipment and parts we buy, see how it goes. And we're gonna turn that in once a month. For now, turn, and look at all our receipts once a month and sign off on them instead of every day.
But what change are you gonna make to that sixty-five hundred dollars that's budgeted for each precinct?
Yeah, so.
We're not just gonna leave that alone?
Yeah. So probably.
If you don't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nah, I was thinking, uh.
Well, if you, don't put it back. Well, you, if you, don't put it back in, well, it's, it won't change anything, just.
Be a lot less paperwork, but they're going.
It ain't going to do anything. We're still going to put it in the computer. That's, that's for you.
What are we going to do with the 6,500? What do you think?
Yeah, it'd just be, so that, what was that, 2,800 I spent this last year? That was just their 35 dollar fees that, that was the hourly rates they charged?
No, that's not just the hourly rates.
That was some parts and everything.
Yes, your oil filters, the things that he buys in bulk. Oil filters, wiper blades, oil, those are the three things that he mentioned to me.
Well, I say reduce the precinct budgets by 6,500. If we're not spending it, then it's extra padding anyway. And if you're not going to be charging it, you're not going to be charged by the shop, you don't need anything in that budget, or do you?
Well, that budget is the 35 dollars and those other parts.
Some parts come out of it.
So.
There's a lot less parts nowadays because we're buying our own hydro fluid.
Leave 1,500 in there, take 5,000 out?
Oil and stuff more nowadays. Uh, we were using a lot of their stuff that was built up in the shop. We kind of depleted our sources over there.
How about we reduce it by 5,000 in each precinct, leave you 1,500 for the parts and miscellaneous?
You could, I'm confused. 5,000 out of which budget?
Out of your budget.
Out of my budget?
Yes.
Take 500 out of my budget?
5,000.
5,000 out of my budget.
Right now, you've got 6,500 in there for maintenance.
It's not in my budget.
We, we actually got 3,000 a piece.
I got 20, I got, yeah, 2,500 or 3,000.
Does he have 6,500 in his budget or not?
No, they take 65 and give it to the shop. It's not in my budget.
Well, it may not be in that line item, but as those checks are written from your budget, they're coded to whatever line item that you have set aside for, for the work that they do out there.
That would have been maintenance, probably.
Here we are. Repairs for precinct one is 21,000 dollars.
So that 6,500, where did that figure come from that we've been talking about?
That's the number that's been in the budget for 10 years.
Is that a separate line?
No, it's within that line.
It's within the 21,000.
It's within the 21.
Isn't that what you use for revenue for the shop?
Yes, that's the revenues for the shop.
Up to 6,500. But last year I only put in 2,800 of it. And you did 3, 3,200 or something?
He did 4,000.
What'd y'all do? Six?
Mine's 28, I think it was.
I would be more like, take 3,000 out of each one of us and maybe 15 for Tim, for sheriff's department. And then it won't have to do any of that 35 dollar hourly paperwork.
Okay.
What'd you say, 3,000?
Cause we buy a lot, we buy a lot more parts now than we did before. We kind of used up what was in the shop. If they had it, they stocked up on a few things. Now if we need a blade for something or whatever, we'll, we use that to buy it on our own.
They keep all the, uh, cutting blades, they buy them in bulk.
Yeah, they buy those in bulk. So there's a few things he, he, he keeps in stock, a lot less than used to be. I sell that tire fund, he has a 25,000 dollar tire fund.
Are you going to take this 3,000 and put it into the shop budget or just put it back in the general fund?
That'd be more fair. Put it in the shop budget. I think it should be put in the, in the precinct budgets. And then we charge it to the shop, all of it, anyway.
It's in our budget now, 6,500 of it is in our budget.
It is.
Yeah, we only use about three really. We ought to have three back.
I've got to say that, shoot, I've never seen 6,500.
It's out, it comes, it's part of that 21,000.
21,000.
It's in your maintenance and repairs.
Oh, that's why we give it to the shop, right?
Nah, we only, we only.
They charge it, it's not in my budget.
It is in your budget. Your budget's 21,000 dollars for repairs. And as the shop charges you for whatever it is that they do for you, then we pay it out of that 21,000 dollars and it goes into the shop budget for the line item that says 6,500 dollars for precinct one.
You've got, you're looking at mine and I have 6,500 dollars in maintenance.
No, you have 21,000 because you have more, you can get things repaired at other places besides just out of the maintenance farm. But it's li, it's all together in that one line item. It's not separate. We could separate those, but they've not been separated in the past.
In other words, there's a component in your 21,000 dollar line item is, that is assumed to be monies that you will pay to the shop. So the shop shows 6,500 in annual revenue from precinct one as part of their budget. And as included in your 21,000 is that 6,500. Now if it's less, if you only end up paying the shop 3,000, then they're only going to recognize 3,000. So what we're doing here, if we eliminate this intercompany charge, I'll call it, then that expense doesn't come out of your budget and that revenue doesn't go into his budget. The objective here is to save some paperwork. So my question is, if you eliminate that expense of about 3,000 you've suggested, and that makes sense to me, are you going to bump up that shop budget for revenue that it will not receive? Or are you just going to leave it?
They may not need it because the rest of our maintenance and repairs budget is like 6,000 for Applewhite. He probably had to buy a 2,000 dollar motorhead or something that went through the maintenance shop or something. Something, there was a big expense there that was repaired. We can buy that ourself, you know, and pay it.
Okay.
Our own self. It's mainly just for them working on our stuff.
Let's leave their budget alone then. All right, so as I understand it, whoever wants to make this motion, we're going to make a motion to eliminate the 35 dollar charge that the shop accrues and charges to each precinct and the sheriff for labor. Is that right? Is that what I'm understanding? That's the labor component. We're going to eliminate the paperwork related to that intercompany 35 dollar charge. I'm trying to make this simple choice and come up with a, what's the best way to word it. We're going to reduce, simply reduce the precinct budgets from 21,000 to 18,000 for maintenance. But we're not going to make any changes to the shop budget. So that money in effect goes back to the general fund.
It'll reduce that repairs and maintenance by 3,000. Uh, we all have a different amount, we, when we did our budget, we're not all at 21, we may be, I may be at 15, I think.
It also reduces the revenue in the shop.
Yes, but I don't know if he's, he, he turns back some this year, didn't he?
All right, well, we'll deal with it later.
Yeah, he turns back, so it'll cut it pretty close.
If he shows up in the red, we'll have to deal with that at some point in the future. Main objective today is, as I see it, is we're trying to reduce some paperwork. And we're going to ask Jeff yes, or we're not going to have Jeff bill you on a quarterly basis.
He won't have to bill then, just turn in our, our parts, our parts POs. Uh, we'll, we'll have to buy our own parts with our own PO number at our department.
He may need to bill you for the things that he already has on the shelf.
He does have a few things on the shelf that may take years to get rid of. But yes, we could, we could pay for extra parts. He may have an extra set of blades or something, a few tires that we wouldn't have to order them, we'll just use them up.
Would you try to prioritize that out?
Uh, maybe even some wiper blades, there's some, several things in there. He may have a filter or two, but, uh, most of the time, we're trying to get away from that and buy our own parts.
Do you guys save some good blades by?
Yeah, we do buy those in bulk. That may hurt us on that.
That's the bad price of one of those. You give 50 cents discount.
For what?
Those, uh, blades for the.
Nah, that.
Maintenance maybe?
Yeah, you, get one set of blades. I'm not going to buy blades in bulk and let you use them all.
That's true, you could, you could buy your own.
And then you charge them out here and use it.
Well, we bought our own blades, but we bought them in bulk. I bought 4 cents.
Okay. We're going to wrap this up in two minutes. If y'all want to continue this discussion, let's do so on your own time. And I appreciate what you're trying to get worked out.
Okay.
But it's gone beyond what the original objective is in this motion. So I, I think your idea was reasonable, let's try that this year.
Let's try that, 3,000 per precinct and 15,000 per sheriff's department maintenance to be paid to the maintenance building fund. And then we'll do our own parts.
I don't think that's right. The motion is to eliminate the intercompany charge of 35 dollars effective November 1st.
Okay. Eliminate that charge of 35 dollars.
Reduce the precinct budget for maintenance by 3,000 dollars.
Okay.
And 15,000 dollars for the sheriff's department. Period. I'll second that. Questions?
Why don't we reduce, just reduce the 35 dollars an hour and leave the other alone and see where it goes for 6,500? If he has it left over, it'll go back over like it did.
If he, if he who has it left over?
The maintenance shop.
This has nothing to do with the maintenance shop?
Comes out of our budgets personally.
We're not making any changes to the budget in the shop.
I got you.
Okay, okay, I'm going to second that motion.
Okay.
All in favor of eliminating the 35 dollar intercompany charge to buy the shop to the precincts and the sheriff's office will cease October 31. And we will make a mid-year budget adjustment to reduce four precinct maintenance budgets by 3,000 dollars, sheriff's department maintenance budget by 15,000 dollars. Any other questions, comments? Be sure we're clear on this. All right, all in favor, say aye. Now, as you all find other things that come up in an effort to streamline and fine tune this process, I encourage anything that would work towards that objective. And I, but I think this is a good step right here. To eliminate additional paperwork that affects everybody, specifically the shop and auditor's office. Okay, item number seven, considering possibly approve a bond for Barbara Sherbit, our county auditor. No, 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 that was, we did that. I'm still thinking the last week. Make her the authorized signer on all of the appropriate bank accounts that she needs to be the authorized signer on. It's kind of got us hamstrung right now while she's not authorized to sign on these important accounts.
I made those.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker.
No, he made the motion.
By Commissioner Applewhite. One of y'all talk a little higher than the other and the other one talk lower. Okay. Applewhite motion, Parker second, to make Barbara an authorized signer on all of our bank accounts. All in favor, say aye. Okay, items number eight and nine, I've got two subdivision issues here. Uh, I believe that they're both relatively simple in that we don't have some of the typical, uh, trouble points that we have had on others. In other words, there's no road issues involved, there's no water supply issues involved, there's no power supply issues involved, and there's no lot size issues that affect the ability to, to meet our one acre requirements and to meet, uh, have designing an appropriate sewage system with septic. So, let me take these one at a time and kind of explain to you the uniqueness of each of these. The first one is considering possibly approve a modification to the Sandlin Ranch subdivision involving the subdivision of two lots into four lots. If you recall, a while back, we approved a Sandlin Ranch subdivision. And a gentleman by the name of Joe Zouen, Z O U E N, I'm sure I tore that name up, Joe Z O U E N, has purchased a couple of lots. He may have purchased something else in there, but specifically he purchased a couple of extra large lots that were, uh, some two acres each in size and he's wanting to subdivide those down. So let me listen to, let, let you listen to the details from Clint Bane, uh, which in here has his suggestion on what we should do. So Clint says, "As I mentioned in the previous emails from July 23rd and July 26, 2018, I've been contacted by Joe Zouen, who owns lots 12 and 19 in Sandlin Ranch number two. It appears that when the lots were being divided in Sandlin Ranch number two, lots 12 and 19 were surveyed as approximately two acres rather than the one acre that was done on the majority of the other lots." So you had a subdivision and majority of them were about one acre, but these two extra large, two acre lots were created. Who knows what the developer had in mind at that time? Joe purchased these lots, I presume for speculator purposes, and now wishes to divide the two large lots into four lots with each being a minimum of one acre. A copy of the surveyed property identifying the four new lots as 12A and B and 19A and B is attached to this email. There's no need for road construction for this change, uh, as two of the lots have frontage road on County Road 2720 and the other two have frontage on 2724. The one acre lot size should be adequate for onsite sewage and meet the requirements in the local orders. Provided this increase in the number of lots does not exceed the number of water meters available, I feel we should allow this amendment to the original plat to proceed. I have looked over the existing plat, I do not see where this type of situation would arise again in the remainder of Sandlin Ranch." So you do have a subdivision, but it's not a brand new subdivision. It's simply, uh, cutting these two lots and creating four lots. And I agree with him on all of this. I don't see any need for any other requirements for him. Uh, he did check with the water supplier and the number of meters does not have any bearing on this. There's adequate water supply and adequately sized, uh, water lines here. All right, motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite to allow Joe Zouen to, uh, cut these two large lots in Sandlin Ranch number two into a total of four lots.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Fitch, all in favor, say aye. And then we've got Kingsway Acres and Kingsway Acres is going to be a large lot development. Uh, this is Michael Barley, for any of you that know Mike from Luminate. Mike's got a nice subdivision proposal here. This again is from Clint Bane. On or about September 4th, Michael Barley met me at the sheriff's office and submitted a subdivision site plan for onsite sewage that was completed by George Sanford, who again is a professional engineer. The site plan is for the proposed Kingsway Acres subdivision located at the intersection, the northeast corner of 4360 and 4330. And it's identified currently by the Titus County Appraisal District as a single parcel, number 4373. The total acreage on that parcel is 49.10 acres. The proposed subdivision will divide it, that 49 acres into six lots, ranging from on the low end of 5.1 acres up to 15.31 acres as follows. There's a 5.1, a 5.3, a 5.2, a 5.1, and then a couple of big ones, a 13.1 and a 15.31. Lots one and two have frontage along 4330. Lot three has frontage along both 4330 and 4360. Lots four, five, and six each have frontage along 4360 for road access. So there's no new roads being created, they'll all have driveways coming off of these county roads. The small drawings submitted to me did not provide the distance or length of road frontage for each of the six lots, however, that information. however, that information will be shown on the survey plats. I reviewed the site plan for onsite sewage and find that the plan meets the requirements. Additionally, the subdivision site plan well exceeds the minimum lot sizing. I recommend that Mr. Barley proceed with his plans for developing Kingsway Acre subdivision and complete the remaining steps. I do note as a reminder to all parties concerned, in the event that any of the six lots are later subdivided, creating smaller lots that do not meet the exemptions to subdividing property, then at that time, they'll have to go through a subdivision process. In other words, if somebody were to buy one of these fifteen acre or even five acre lots and decide they wanna chop them up smaller, they're gonna have to go through this process again. And maybe it would turn out to be something like the previous one, but either way, he's just making sure that everybody understands, we're giving Michael the permission to make these six big lots, but if somebody wants to chop them up smaller, they're gonna have to go through this same process. So Mr. Barley has got all of his checklist items done. The fire chief has said, yes, we can access all of these, Tri Water says, yes, we can provide water, Architect Council of Government says, we'll give individual addresses when a homeowner contacts us, and he's provided his tax certificate showing all taxes to be current. I'll let the two of you look at that. Jimmy, I know you're familiar with that, there's kinda how these lots lay out, you'll see how they fit there at the corner, at the intersection of those two county roads. Jimmy, do you have any comments on this subdivision? You probably know it as well as any of us.
Uh, no sir, everything, to my knowledge, is checked out on it. Everything's road frontage, pretty much, so there won't be, unless, like I say, somebody does come in with those two bigger areas and wants to subdivide it or anything, but then, then they'll have to deal with the road requirements or whatever, however they set it up. But everything's, everything checked out fine on, as far as I could tell.
Yeah, if you were to subdivide those two big tracks, they'd either require an internal road, or they'd be awfully awkward-looking, long skinny lots.
You know, somebody could buy both those lots and break them up, but, the bad thing about that is there's a pretty good-sized creek that runs right down through the middle of them, so.
Okay, well, again, this subdivision doesn't seem to have any of the problems that we typically have dealt with in the past in considering these subdivisions, so I don't see any reason, nor does Jimmy, nor does Clint Bane, see any reason not to allow Mr. Barley to make this subdivision.
I make that motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker for approval. Second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor of approving the subdivision application for Kingsway Acres, say aye. Opposed? Right, that passes. Item number 10, considering possibly approve either a six-month or a 12-month runout period for UMR to handle 2019 health insurance claims. Let me try to explain this one. This is, this is a judgment call for us, and it's kind of a, it's kind of a gamble here what we wanna do. You understand that when we make the conversion on January 1st to new insurance, that any claims during 2019 are going to be the responsibility of our current carrier, UMR. And there will be claims that will trickle in, in the coming months after January 1st, that will relate to occurrences in 2019. In other words, the way that it works, when you change these carriers, the new carriers don't take over all responsibilities just because the bill comes in in 2020. That will be UMR's responsibility. And we have seen many examples of these, an illness or a surgery or something like that that occurs late in the year, and these bills can literally trickle in for months, or complications may arise, or there just may be simply delay in billing. So UMR says, "We will either honor a six-month runout or a 12-month runout for us to handle claims." The recommendation from Higginbotham is, for the nominal additional cost to go an entire 12 months, would be wise for us to continue to pay administrative costs to achieve a full 12 months, so that we don't run into a situation where a bill comes in due to a complicated surgery, for example, that occurred in December of 2019, and we're still, that patient is still dealing with problems in July of 2020. UMR, without a 12-month runout period, UMR can literally cut off any payments after June 30th and say, "Sorry, that's not part of what we agreed to. You all said that you wanted us to honor those runout claims only through the 30th of June." And while it's probably a low probability that we'll still have stuff dragging on after six months, the potential is there for us to get stuck with those bills should we not have established an adequate runout period. This is all new to me, this is just simply beside what's prudent for the county to avoid getting us in a jam, and we certainly wouldn't wanna tell an employee, "Sorry, those expenses are not covered because you exceeded the six month." It's typically beyond their control. So therefore, again, CAPS is recommending 12 months. And yes, this will cost a few thousand dollars to do that, but I think it's a relatively nominal cost to lock in to a 12-month runout.
So it's a couple thousand?
It's like three thousand dollars, I recall.
Yeah, we get stuck with one claim, it probably hurt us.
Well, yeah, absolutely, it could, it could. Is it likely? You know, my first reaction was, we don't need it beyond six months, but after I talked with Toni, she convinced me that it probably would be a wise thing to do.
I make a motion, we do it for the 12-month period?
Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch that we approve a 12-month runout period for UMR to handle 2019 insurance claims.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker, all in favor say aye. Item number 11, this is something that I don't think we've dealt with in a long time, perhaps never. But as part of our fire inspection for the courthouse that was performed by the fire department, I don't know that this is, I don't think this is a new law, I just think that they are asking us to get this done because we all know that it's been a while. And that is to perform a test of the main courthouse water hose system, including the related plumbing that comes from the city water supply into the building. And this is a pressure test where a company would come in, make sure that their, the water supply is flowing properly, that there's no leaks or breaks in the plumbing bringing the water into the building. And then, if you come in the north entrance and look immediately to your left, you'll see a cabinet there that houses internal county-owned fire hose that is there to supplement the efforts of the fire department, should they ever need to come into this building and have, you know, large water demand to put the fire out. And in view of the fact that it's been years, maybe as long as this building has been remodeled and those systems were put in place, it may have never been tested, nobody at the fire department is aware that this has been tested. This is not something the local fire department does a test of. You know, they even bring in an outside company to test their fire hoses. And so I had asked Chief McCray, "Well, when you do that in the next few months, could you just test our hoses as well?" He said, "Sure, I'll be glad to tack you onto that, try to save everybody some money." But, when he checked into that, no, there's more testing involved to what's being required here. It goes beyond just the hose, it goes to the underground plumbing as well. And that requires specialty equipment, that they don't have the skills nor testing meters to handle. So, with the help of Zach Blunt, who is our fire alarm guy out of Paris, he gave us the name of Genesis Fire Protection, they are based in Segalville. And actually, David, David Holmes talked with Gary Moore there with Genesis about our situation. And Mr. Moore with Genesis says the scope of his work will be to test the standpipe and flushing open and closing of valves, water pressure check, and flushing water system from the top fire hose valve. So, this will get us in compliance and is being required to meet this, the law regarding testing. It should be done every, every one to two years, and this is a total cost of fifteen hundred dollars. If I had an alternative for you, I'd give you one, but to not have this tested and know that it's working right, I think would be negligent on our part.
Is that the only fire hose box we have standing on the first?
I, I think, I don't see any.
I think, pretty sure it's the only one we've got.
That's all I've seen.
Make a motion that we have it tested?
Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch to hire Genesis Fire Protection to do testing of our internal courthouse, fire hose, and related plumbing. Second, Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor say aye. Okay, it's time to consider our next year's Commissioner Court schedule and holidays. Item number 12 is to consider and possibly approve holidays for 2020. There's no change here to the number of holidays, let me run down these for you. See if you have any objections or ideas or questions. We'll have New Year's Day, which will be Wednesday, January 1st, Martin Luther King Day, Monday, January 20th, President's Day on Monday, February 17th, Good Friday on Friday, April 10th, Memorial Day, Monday, May 25th, Independence Day, July 3rd is Friday. You have the 4th on Saturday. As James and I were putting this together, we thought it made the most sense to have that holiday on Friday, the 3rd, rather than on the Monday. Labor Day, Monday, September 7th, Columbus Day, Monday, October 12th, Veterans Day, Wednesday, November 11th, Thanksgiving, Thursday and Friday, November 26th, 27th, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, Thursday and Friday, the 24th and 25th of December. I have a motion. Any question? Got a second by Commissioner Parker. Any discussion on this, anybody want me to run over any of that again? I don't think there was anything really odd, other than that July 4th situation where the 4th is on Saturday. All right, all in favor of approving the 2020 holiday schedule, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now, the Commissioner's Court dates. We have gone with the 2nd and 4th throughout. The only exception to a Monday meeting would be May 22 on a Friday prior to the Monday Memorial Day holiday. And then on October 9th, backing up from the 12th, which is the Columbus Day holiday on Monday, the 12th, at least in this schedule, I'm proposing that that Commissioner's Court be held on Friday beforehand. Now, in the past, we have done some Tuesday meetings, and we always have that ability. My thinking is you'd rather get these meetings done rather than coming back off a three-day weekend for that meeting. But you can always change those if you want to, or we can change them now.
I would like to recommend that we have one of those meetings at least in the evening, so our citizens can attend the meeting at 6 o'clock.
All right, is that your motion?
I'll make that a motion, yeah.
Commissioner Riddle makes a motion that we approve this holiday schedule. And I'll let you complete the rest of that sentence, having meetings at night, Quinn?
One of the meetings at 6:00 PM in the evening.
One meeting per month in the evening at 6:00 PM is the motion.
Yes.
All right, for lack of a second, I'll entertain another motion.
I make a motion, we approve the Commissioner's Court schedule.
All right, and does that include, this, the way this is stated on here, Commissioner's Court will be held the 2nd and 4th Monday of each month at 9:00 AM, except when this falls on a holiday listed below are the Commissioner's Court dates for 2020. And that Monday bumped back to Friday occurs in two places. So this assumes 9 o'clock meetings for every meeting.
Yes, sir. Second?
Second is made by Commissioner Fitch, all in favor say aye. Thank you. Item number 14, we are down to approval of our oral and written reports. Thank you, ma'am.
There's one thing I want to ask your digital here. In the past, when we were doing the pay bills on the day of Commissioner's Court, there was a line out here where they showed you what those bills were. We did not do that, I prefer to give you something out of the system that's in writing from the system, because you know that it's real. I don't want us to type a report like that. You will see those when we get to that portion. When you approve the bills, they've all already been paid, but the total that's on here is something less by a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of checks that Ms. Cheryl has cut this morning. The report that you have in your hand was ran at 7:53, and she did the checks between 7:53 and our meeting today.
A hundred and forty-four thousand?
Yes, sir.
Gosh, you're busy, aren't you? Motion for approval of these reports is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker, all in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, Cheryl, our treasurer's report, please.
Make motion to approve treasurer's report.
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Parker. Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. I have your signature request there. Item number 17, signed pay orders to approve bill payments.
Make motion for fair view. I mean, this budget amendment.
I skipped over that, and we do have a budget amendment, don't we?
We do not have.
We do not, okay. Good deal. Thank you for catching that. So on budget amendments, no action. On item number 17, motion for payment of bills.
I make it motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker.
Second?
And second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. All right, closing comments. Um, we had, uh, we had open enrollment last week. Far as I know, it went very smooth. Barbara, thank you to your ladies that participated in that. We did have a presence by Toni with Higginbotham and Jessica there, just in case anything came up. But as I saw it, Tac had adequate manpower and did a good job of informing everybody of the changes to this new plan. Uh, I think it's going to be a positive. I want to recognize Commissioner Fitch for being the motivational force behind getting that done. I, uh, I, uh, can't say I told you so. In fact, just the opposite. But I think that that went well. Seems to me that there's been favorable receipt by the employees, and we will hope that any hiccups along the way as we transition will be minimal. They have a nice booklet put together for us. I thought they did a very professional job. So we will, we appreciate UMR and what they've done for us over the years and the continued support of, of Higginbotham in helping us make this transition. This past week, Barbara and I sat through two hours of conversations on the phone with the underwriters for our bond issue and with Standard and Poor's, who will give us a county rating for our bonds. And we hope that because the, you know, because the climate has changed a little bit since we did this last time, we have settled the Luminate lawsuit, and we settled the bridge lawsuit, and so have no legal issues outstanding. We continue to have a strong fund balance. Uh, I believe we were able to field their questions to their satisfaction, and we will hope to maybe get a little tiny improvement in our bond rating, which always helps in trying to get those low rates. The interest rates have tweaked up a little bit, so not quite as low as when we began this process, but we still hope that we can catch it, uh, here, you know, in this election time of year and reap all the benefits that we had hoped in that bond issue. So Barbara, thanks for helping me survive that two-hour phone conversation. And then lastly, we're in the middle of early voting, so if you haven't voted, take the time. You've got 10 amendments. You've got, uh, two council seats if you are a city resident. And that's going on over there under the guidance of Pam Holmes, and that seems to be going well. They've got a little bit different design this year. You come in off the east or west entrance, and you exit out towards the, uh, towards the post office. But they've got a good bunch over there running that operation, and I was in and out as long as it took me to read all those amendments. Commissioner Riddle?
Nothing.
Commissioner Fitch?
Uh, got some word back from the FCC in Washington DC that they posted our, uh, changes to our Dish Network, DirecTV, Modified Market to get the local channels. They posted that October the 11th, and then that's posted for people to look at it and the companies and all to know about for 60 days. So we should find out an answer around December 11th or 15th or something like that. So it's looking good.
Once that time period passes, what the next step is?
I do not know yet. I don't know how long it'll take to get, uh, those stations to negotiate a contract with Dish and DirecTV, so I'll find out.
Would it affect cable? Would it affect Suddenlink cable as well?
Yes, mhm. They'll be able to get local channels if they don't already have them.
And again, the objective would be to get us grouped in with Longview Tyler stations and instead of being grouped in with Louisiana.
Those local stations were all approved by our ZIP code, 75455 ZIP code, so everything looks real positive.
That's great. Commissioner Applewhite?
Yes, I'd like to mention, uh, kind of thoughts and prayers about the lead back family who lost their wife last week. And, uh, just, you've had a person that led that family to loss of their mother and their children, so.
How many kids did they have?
Two daughters.
How old were they?
Uh, both of them were out of school.
Out of college?
One was in college, and one of them's got married, and the other one's just getting married.
Very unexpected tragedy for a young woman.
Yep.
Jimmy, thank you. I mean, don't I mean?
All right, 10:40, and with a motion to adjourn, we will complete this meeting. Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite, seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. All right, thank you, everyone.